So welcome everybody and thank you for joining the latest webinar in this series. This is the second series of webinars. And it runs from January until May, probably May, I'm not sure if we're going to be going any much further, giving the hope that we will all be back to work in the not too distant future. So my name's Robin Eyre and I'm the chairman of Business Peak District. We have around 650 members of businesses in and around the Peak District. We've got, our members are in a whole variety of sectors from engineering and manufacturing to the broad spectrum of visitor economy, be that accommodation, be that attractions, be that retail cafes, restaurants and pubs. And we also have professionals and accountants and quite a lot of creative industry as well. Myself, I run an online marketing company based at Cromford Mills near Matlock and have the pleasure as well of being the chairman of Business Peak District. So I won't, I won't go into the nitty gritty of what opportunities Business Peak District offers, but please do go to businesspeakdistrict.com and there is a big button to say join. So please do have a look if you're not a member and we look forward to welcoming you. I shall put the, I shall put the link in the description and of course get in contact if you want any further information. So I'm delighted to welcome today Alison Westray Chapman from Derbyshire County Council. She will introduce herself momentarily, but the topic today is the Green Entrepreneurs Fund, which is, which is a very welcome opportunity to invest in the greenness and the environment in, in and around the Peak District. I'm joined by our vice chair, Peter Dewhurst. Perhaps Peter, you could just briefly introduce yourself.
Yes, thank you, Robin. So as a day job, I'm the commercial director at the University of Derby and very interesting, they've been supporting Alison and the county council in developing this fabulous opportunity around the Green Entrepreneurship Fund. So Alison will be taking a lead tonight, but I'll be supporting in whatever way I can. And there is one of the guests that is also here to support Mark who signed in as Sarah Price, but we'll try and make him a presenter as well.
Okay, thank you. And Alison, could you please introduce yourself and then do please crack on? Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Thanks, Robin. Good evening, everybody. So I'm Alison Westray Chapman. I'm the interim head of economic development at the county council and just going to do a quick presentation and take you through the Green Entrepreneurs Programme. So hopefully sharing my screen. Is that all visible?
Not yet.
Okay, let's have a look. It's on there somewhere, hasn't it? There we go.
Looking good.
So the first thing to say, that's the last slide, let's start with the beginning, that's always helpful. I think, I think the first thing to say is, just to reiterate what Peter said, that this is very much a partnership programme. It's been developed with a wide range of partners, but in particular University of Derby. So just a little bit of background, let's get the slideshow on properly. So the background to this, in 2019, the council leader announced a climate and carbon reduction manifesto, had a big event at the county hall and a £4 million budget to support a range of interventions, which some of which are listed there in terms of ensuring that we are meeting government targets ahead of schedule, if at all possible, in terms of green and low carbon. So the, this particular fund sits within a frame of others and that's just showing all the different strategies that we've got in terms of energy, air quality, good growth, so building back better, levelling up, the natural capital strategy that we want to work on in terms of places like Dewan Valley Mills, et cetera, and very much working in partnership with a whole host of businesses that you've got listed there, residents, business, district and borough councils. And then in November 2020, the government announced its 10-point plan, the Green Industrial Revolution. And again, this was really to reinforce target of the path to net zero. And again, whole range of interventions that the government were looking for to support that green industrial revolution. So this particular programme has been developed through a number of meetings and collaborations. We have our high level recovery board, which councillor Lewis chairs. We have an economic recovery cell and a work stream, which includes a multitude of partners, the chamber, the university, the districts and boroughs, they've all been involved. It's definitely part of our approach to building back better, so building back our economy differently. And it's about meeting local and national objectives for alternative energy and really giving us a place in terms of the national agenda. It's also very much a partnership with university and we've worked collaboratively with the university previously on D2EE and decarbonise and that's been about business support programmes to, for businesses to reduce carbon output. So the Green Entrepreneurs then, and this will be the bit that everybody's really keen to know about, so what is it, what can we access and how do we do it? So there's three parts to the programme. The first is what we're calling the demonstrator fund and this is for projects which have the potential national standing and status. So it is definitely about innovation. We are looking at significant grant availability subject to state aid, which is now snappily called public subsidy control rules, and potentially about community interests, collaborating with commercial to provide community heat and power. So that's something that's definitely within the sites. So significant projects there. The small grant fund is to support SMEs and micro businesses, new start and existing, but where they can demonstrate game changing proposals. So if I give an example, if you were, if you were putting solar panels on a barn, that would not qualify, that is not game changing. However, if it was part of something wider about with heat generation that had other implications and partners, then that has the potential to be some sort of project that we could look at. So that is key. What makes this different above and beyond? And then we're also looking at a scholarship fund and this is about retraining individuals to enable them to move into the field of alternative technology. So really about making sure that when we gear up and it won't just be us supporting these initiatives, but businesses move into alternative energy, et cetera, that we actually have residents who can benefit from those new businesses at different, different levels. So quick overview there, this is a new programme. So we, this is how we think it will pan out in terms of our projects. And we're trying to set that out over a period of three years to give it some balance. Clearly, the major projects are going to have significant interventions and so that, that we're looking for currently one round, I'll come on to that shortly, and then a range of smaller interventions. That profiling may, may change as we move through the programme, depending on applications that we get in, we can be measured about that. So who is eligible? So you must be a business that's registered within the county of Derbyshire. We are not covering Derby City, although we understand they may be looking at a similar programme. A small or medium enterprise, so up to 250 staff or a micro business. And again, this can start, support startups as well as existing businesses. The eligibility for the scholarship fund can come from individuals or businesses, but it's, it's got to benefit those individual, an individual to retrain. So a little bit here about process and that, that looks sort of, I guess, quite a lot to work through, but in fact, it's probably akin to any regular funding and programming that where you're applying for funds. So your application is submitted, that has to go through due diligence. So it's about assessing criteria, making sure there's a technical fit. We have actually also implemented, I should add, an expression of interest stage for our grant fund as well, so that we can filter and feedback at an early stage in the process. So you're not making applications, full applications and then wasting time if it's not quite the right fit. So the strand one, so the major application, so that's the demonstrator fund, they will have a process whereby they, those that get through the expression of interest stage will have to make a presentation to the Green Entrepreneurs Programme Board. So that's made up of our elected members, senior staff and senior staff from the University of Derby, Chamber of Commerce and FSB. So a bit Dragons Den-ish, I'd like to think that we were much more supportive than some of the dragon, the dragons in the den, but the principle is that you are talking, we want to hear about your ideas. Technical appraisal again is really key for some of this work that the university will be bringing in. Contracts are awarded following due diligence and then there is monitoring. So that's really key that there's an expectation that we will provide feedback and outputs and there's a lot of detail in there that's probably not appropriate for this conversation today and due diligence reported to the programme board. So in terms of going live, the applications will open on the first of April. So the demonstrator applications open for the first of April and expression of interest. At the moment, we are working on one application round for the demonstrator projects. We have in our back pocket, if we need it, the time to run a second round if we don't secure the projects that we're looking for in, in, in status, I think is probably the key challenge. The small grants grant fund, we've already got three rounds, they're April, October and January. And the scholarship fund will be accepting applications on a monthly basis. So those different time scales relevant to the scale of the programme. For more information, both our county council website and the University of Derby website has more detailed information on the eligibility that is already up there. That's available. So you can read that in, in detail and the detail that sits behind those timetables. So there's a lot more information already on the website. We will be making available the EOI forms on the first of April. We will have, and it's on the website, a, an email address. At this point in time, I would say, don't bother emailing us, we will just feed back an automatic reply that says, our application will be on the website on the first of April. So that's your first port of call. You've got the opportunity now to look at the criteria and the timetabling to work out where you might fit in that, if you've got any ideas, to think about questions that you might want to, to ask us. We are certainly seeing this as a supportive process. And so through that expression of interest, that's about, if it's not appropriate for this fund, providing support to either directly to funds or support that are available, that's alternative, or how you might work the project up. We think there's something there, it's not quite right, but there are ideas and feedback we can share to, to, to work with you to get that project through the process and over the line. So that's a really quick run through chair on, on the project.
Thank you, Alison. We do have some questions. Peter typically leads the questions. Pete, would you like to start?
I would. And I'd really like to congratulate Paul Hesp because he's come forward with a question that hasn't been asked in previous sessions. So Alison and I were involved in a, in a launch event last week, I think it was. And there were a huge number of questions asked there and the responses to that will be made available via, I think, East Midlands Chambers website. But Paul Hesp has asked something no one else has so far asked and that is, so Alison, and if Mark is around in the background somewhere under the pseudonym, pseudonym Sarah, subsidy control rules still in consultation, not in effect for presumably some months. Do you already know this scheme will comply or could changes to say eligibility or scope of projects be needed?
Okay, I'm happy to kick off in terms of the projects, the changes to those state aid rules I don't envisage would change our eligibility for the programme. Essentially, it's a very open programme and the parameters. Where that change is the value of the intervention that we can or cannot make for, to a private business. And so we'll, as with many other funding regimes, because it won't just be us that's affected by this, we will be guided by central government in terms of the agreements that they make. So you're right to raise, it's not been raised before. It's a really good question. And I think what I'm minded to say as well is, we'll go and do a bit more digging on it. And I don't want to pretend we've got all the answers, but we'll do a bit more digging. And if there's a mechanism to sharing and feeding that back, then we will, we will do that as we have with other questions. That's a good get out really, isn't it? I'm afraid.
Okay. The next one is a little easier. And Neil, great question still, but it's one that we've tackled before. So would multi-farm anaerobic digesters be the kind of thing?
Is that easier? So certainly there are no sectors excluded. So you are farming businesses are eligible to apply. I think as a general statement, I'm going to go back to what we said about the game changing.
Absolutely.
Is it, is it, is it something that's being done elsewhere, Neil? If it is, what would make it different? How could you set that up or the outcomes be different from something that's already being done? And again, if you've got those ideas, I think we would encourage you to submit an expression of interest. If you, you know, you think you're on to something, but you might need support in developing it, then that would be the way I would approach that. Submit that form and we can have that conversation and, and maybe support and, and direct you on, on that.
Okay. So again, it's this idea of to what extent is it game changing? To what extent is this putting Derbyshire on a map? Is this Neil likely to be a submission for a demonstrator project? There are probably only going to be six of those that go through for large sums of money. So will it assist us? Will it, could we be profiling Derbyshire at COP26 based on the demonstrators that have come forward? It's that sort of conversation. And there's a similar conversation around the, the smaller grant funds. I don't know whether Mark wishes to come in to add anything. Robin, could you make Mark available to talk?
I'm assuming Mark is still Sarah.
Yeah, yeah, Sarah Price.
Okay. So Sarah, Mark at least. The floor is yours.
Sorry, I missed the last bit of the question. I was trying to answer a question about state aid, the previous ones stepping away, but.
You wanted to come in on that one then, Mark? And then we were just discussing the, the game changing nature of anaerobic digesters.
Well, I'll do the state aid one first. I mean, the advice that we had around state aid, I was at an event last week where we had some advice from solicitors who have been essentially advising the government on this. And Paul is right, nothing's been decided. Consultation goes on till the end of March, I believe. And then there'll be a further series of, it needs to go through the devolved nations and all those sort of avenues anyway. But one of the bits of us we had was that if something was eligible under the old state aid rules, if it was compliant under that, then it's likely, and it's only likely that it will remain so under the new rules. There's lots of different things around special drawing rights. So essentially what would have been dominus and the values of that. But yeah, I think if you could do it under state aid, you're likely that it should be okay. But obviously don't hold me to that.
And Mark, can you advise just on timelines for clarity?
Timelines for the state aid?
Yeah.
So the consultation, as far as I understand, runs until the end of March. So it's a public consultation. And then, well, the government have said, I think, summer, but they haven't said, they haven't said which summer, first of all, but they probably haven't said whether that's June or whether that's August. But I suspect it will probably be pushed back. And bearing in mind, this wasn't even released until, I think it was New Year's Eve and the first bit of guidance came out. So it's very much work in progress.
And how does that tie in with the time scales for the Green Entrepreneurship Fund?
So this was another area that we discussed. It's very unlikely, if you've done something under the old state aid rules, that the government would expect you to then mitigate it. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't be admitting that you've done something that wasn't in compliance with something that they're then going to set into future years. So if you are happy that what you're looking to do meets JIBA or dominus rules or procurement rules under EU state aid, then that should be fine. But that's very much should be.
Okay. So for the, for the immediate future, we're looking at rules that have existed for some time on the understanding that. And so, you know, the question is absolutely right, that depending on the outcome of the consultation, there may be some requirement to revisit. But we are working with the best information available to us at the present moment in time.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's. Yep. My personal view, for what it's worth, is likely to be easier. We're not, we're dealing with the, an agreement whereby with, if you read it, if you want to read it, it talks about you would only fall foul of subsidy control if you were likely to cause a international competition to be breached. And I think it's quite unlikely that in terms of local rules that will happen. Sorry, local initiatives that that would happen.
Right. Okay. And George, to add anything regarding the, the game changing nature of anaerobic digesters?
I think really what, what you said and what Alison said has captured it all. If it's something that can be proven to work on a larger scale, perhaps it can be replicated more widely, that might, might.
We've lost you there unfortunately. Your sound has gone.
I was wondering, Pete, and Alison, from your previous discussions, what sort of other questions have arisen? You mentioned that Paul's question was, was a good one and a new one. What else have people been asking?
There is, there was a fantastic question that's been raised about who can, who could apply and whether there was a, there was a project being explored in the north of the Peak District, which involves hydroelectric scheme that could benefit a, a community as a whole. So could the community apply? And so we were looking at, well, they would presumably need to link with a business of some description, the one that is, is developing the hydroelectric source. So we would look at consortia, we would look at charities putting forward submissions. So there was one area there. The eligibility criteria available on the website gives a clear indication, as do the responses to questions that we've previously put through that are made available, I think, Alison, on the East Midlands Chamber website. That was an interesting one, centred around Hope Valley, I think that was. There was a, there was a question from a, someone who has a large building, a warehouse and was inquiring whether if he puts solar panels on the roof, would that be eligible? And we had a concern there. It's not exactly game changing. And there are other pots of money that have assisted and can assist with putting solar panels on a roof. However, if you could imagine that there was sufficient volume that he was then offering to supply local power to, power to local houses as well, that feels like it might be a bit more game changing. So it's, it's that what's usual about this. And we will be seeking that information in the expressions of interest. What makes this something different that can't be funded by the many other pots of money that are out there? Alison, any other questions that spring to mind from our previous engagements?
One was about, could you apply for a small grant fund and the scholarship fund? And the answer is yes. We might want to build them into one application, but yes, that's, that's got potential. We've been asked about parish councils being eligible. And again, similar to the example Peter's just given, they are not eligible in their own right. But if they were a partner within a wider project, a collaboration with the business sector, with businesses, then yes, they could be he and partner. So it's, I think it's all about just thinking differently about how you approach this, definitely thinking in partnership. I think that's where much is going to come. So if you're a business, it's thinking about the partnerships that you might develop with the community for best endeavours. And if you're in the public sector, it's about how might you align with businesses to develop a particular project. So I think we're going to see a lot on that front.
So something, sorry Pete. So something like, if you're talking about communities, how about something like electric vehicle charging? Is that fairly standard?
So electric vehicle charging, just in its own right, is probably not game So electric vehicle charging, just in its own right, is probably not game changing enough. So again, it's about thinking about how you might deliver that, where it's delivered. So it's just, it's that added value, isn't it? So anyone can put electric vehicle charging points in. So that's okay. That's the right on, you know, but it's got to be something above and beyond that. We're all.
We're so good.
I, I was just saying, we're directing people to the low carbon network as well that the university facilitates. So that's something that we might, you know, want to put on the chat after so that you've got the opportunity to have those ideas and conversations. Where might I find a, who might be interested in? So we're keen to facilitate that as, as well.
I'll put the link in the chat for that. So we're, we're interested in businesses, communities coming together, engaging with one another. And the Low Carbon Business Network can assist with that. I'll put that in the chat. There are two great questions come in and there are more coming in now. There, it was a slow start, but it's speeding up and Paul and Neil are, are leading the charge here. So as I put something in the chat, Alison, this is a topic we covered earlier today. The scholarship fund, is it businesses or individuals who must apply?
It can be both. It can be both. That's very clear in our criteria. You can apply as an individual or you can apply as a business for staff.
And just to give an example there. So one that's been well aired, and there have been some exploratory, there've been some inquiries already. If we take as an example, a, a business that is used to fitting and servicing gas boilers and they wish their staff to be trained or individuals to be trained to fit hydrogen powered boilers, then that's the sort of, of scholarship fund initiative we'd be keen to support. Next one is from Neil Butler, Alison, and there's a, there's Neil, we might ask you to come in here because I don't know what CHP stands for, but then again, Alison might. Would a housing association CHP be a thing for an estate?
I think, does it not mean combined heat and power?
Ah, there you go. Well done, Robin. So would a housing association combined heat and power initiative be a thing for an estate? So if they were looking to introduce something across an entire community of houses, might that be a prospect? And it sounds like we would be interested in hearing more about it, I think, Alison.
I, that's certainly got scalability, I would say again. So it would, for me, that would be about where is that power being generated or how? Because we have combined heat and power schemes that exist. So what would be different about this one? So again, it's adding that value. What would make this different and greener in terms of the, the, the energy source? I, I would have said. I'm, I'm keen not to rule stuff out because this is not a filter exercise for potential bids. So I'm just concerned that we want to respond in a general way because we want to encourage people to come forward. But you have to keep focusing on that game changing element.
And also just in addition to that, what we'd be keen to do is direct submissions elsewhere as appropriate. If there is a, if it doesn't fit with the criteria for this, but we believe there is other support available. Now Paul again, large scale elect, so with pushing the electric vehicle charging station point, what if it's large scale for many vehicles as a public access facility? He keeps going at it.
And, and again, I'm, I'm just going to say, so what would be the diff, you know, what's the difference? What's the added value from that that's different? That gives a different aspect to the project in terms of providing that facility. I can't hear you, Peter.
The host clearly thought that I was talking too much, so he decided to mute me centrally. Now, in terms of the demonstrators, we're looking to push into new territory. So that they're, they're a set apart. In terms of the smaller grants, then Paul, that area may be one we, that is worthy of further consideration. I am aware of a number of businesses looking to move into the electric charging area. I know a number of individuals have already indicated they would be interested in the scholarship fund to train into this area. So it's to what extent is the vehicle charging sufficiently game changing for the smaller grants? I think Robin's going to mute me again now.
We've gotten some more.
So we do, we do have further questions. Can I, oh, I thought you'd frozen that Alison. Can I, can I go back to the timeframe, please? Could you please share your screen again with the timeframe on? Just so we can, just so we can be absolutely clear. So could you, is that possible?
Yep.
I think it was towards the end. Yeah. So I think it was a, okay. So applications open on the first of April. How long would a, um, a decision be made? Would it take to make a, to make a decision? So let's just say mid-April, you receive, you receive an application.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm just going to open up because I'm on my home laptop. So I'm just going to open up my work laptop because all this detail is on the website with those individuals set out. But I'll just get that up now. And I, I did notice Neil had come back and said he was a green local councillor and wanted to help. Probably hence the questions that he was asking about, um, different projects being eligible. That's, that's, that's useful background, Neil. Right. I can't do two things at once, Peter. You need to do some busking whilst I'm typing it.
Okay. You, you type Faith, a really interesting contribution. Faith asked the question, game changers, is it just a demonstrator? Is it the small grant as well? I'd say Faith that clearly the demonstrators are, are taking us into new territory here. That we're talking about, in effect, an experimental approach, R and D and so on. So clearly they're at the edge. We would like to see the, the smaller grants also having an element of game changer here. But as has already been, also been said in the, in the comment box, you know, it could well be seen as a game changer if we are introducing 100 plus charging stations across, across the county, across the Peak District. So we want to hear, we want to see those expressions of interest submitted. We want to get people in to talk to them. This is, this is a process that is meant to be supportive, abrasive, and where we can't support directly, we'll hopefully find a way of supporting you by some means or other.
Okay. So hopefully you've got that on the screen now. The magic of the internet is that, can everybody see that?
We can only see your presentation, more information and to link.
Oh, why? I've just gone into the link and thought I was being quite smart about that.
Is it on a different screen? You might, you might want to drag your, drag it over.
Okay. Just bear with me then. There we go. Well done. And learning something new, learning the new all the time. So this is on the websites, both websites. And you can see there that's setting out the process for each round. I mentioned that the demonstrator round, we've just got one at the moment, but we're just going to see how that goes. What this does mean is that we are not going to throw all the small grant money out in round one. So anybody thinking that they had an idea, but it wasn't ready to go first of April, you have got the time to either work the scheme up, have further conversations and come back to us for later rounds. So that, that's absolutely clear there. So all those dates are set out quite comprehensively there.
Okay.
That's important to reassure people that we're not going to just empty the coffers on the first round. That's not the intention. It will be staged over those periods.
Thank you. Pete, are there any more questions?
None as, no further as yet. I've not checked the chat. Let me just.
I think we're okay in the chat. To all our attendees, do, do please fire away some more questions. We have a few minutes left. So John has asked, for something to be game changing, is the most important criterion, scale or technological innovation?
So I think for the demonstrator fund, it's absolutely both. It, it's, it is of that schemes of national standing that we're looking at. So schemes that, projects that could be rolled out. We also know that there would be some risk with those projects. I think it's fair to say. Were you going to come in, Peter?
I was. I was going to say that the, the origins of this fund date back a year to when councillor Lewis hosted a climate change conference at County Hall just before lockdown. And he announced this fund at, at the very end of that conference, at which he was keen to see examples come forward, the projects come forward, demonstration projects come forward that were radical in their thinking. An example he used at the time was new hydroelectric systems in the River Derwent. There are a number of other projects that I'm aware have been thought through at the present moment in time. Waste to power systems and so on, most of which require some level of innovation. So technological innovation and scalability either to, to scale onsite or to take that concept and able to locate it in other locations to deliver power solutions. And, and certainly councillor Lewis was very focused on that power generation component as well in terms of the demonstrators.
Thank you. I see Phil has entered a comment in the chat. So let me just read that out in full. And it might be of interest to, to our audience today. The Energy for Business Programme, delivered by the University of Nottingham, also offers support to SMEs in Derbyshire. The partial grant scheme is smaller and potentially less game changing than the GEF. Grants up to £8,000 for 40% contribution to green technologies or building efficiency measures. Other support includes extended postgraduate placements, academic consultancy and technical reports. So there's a link. No reason why firms can't apply to both programmes as long as they're not claiming for the same project twice. So let's make sure I put that link in any follow up notes.
And I really like Phil's contribution. Absolutely. This isn't about competition. This is about supporting this green agenda. In there, he references extended postgraduate placements. And one aspect, the Green Entrepreneurs Fund is we would encourage opportunities to provide students with experience to bring them on board with these projects, both the demonstrator projects and the smaller grants. And that's, that's partly about trying to bring on that next generation. So they're thinking about green energy, the green agenda and so on. So it's just about encouraging that next generation down a path that hopefully we all want to tread.
Thank you. Pleasure, Phil. So are there any more questions? If not, shall we call it a wrap, as they say in, in the business? Pete, Alison, would you like to contribute anything else? Or have we about answered, do you think, most people's questions?
I think.
Well, I was just going to say one thing because I'm kind of, Alison is talking to the county. And I suppose with my University of Derby hat on, I'm talking to the county. But with my business Peak District hat on, I'm talking to the Peak District. And let's make sure the Peak District gets a fair crack at this fund and is ably represented. It would be a shame that the, that this wonderful opportunity is seized elsewhere in the county and the Peak District is left, so to speak, on the shelf that little bit. So that's the only thing I wanted to add.
And, and I would just encourage, you know, don't, don't rule anything out. Rule it in and have those dialogues with us through the expression of interest process. Very much about supporting. So, you know, from a starting point of, I'm not sure this will fit. We'd like to work with people to support them on, on, on the journey to doing whatever it is that they're keen to, to, to work on.
Can I also say one other thing? And that is that I thought Phil's contribution was really insightful and that it would be useful to reach out outside of this meeting. Because if there are some proposals, expressions of interest that come in that we feel aren't appropriate for the GEF, it might be, we might be able to help Phil. And there may be an opportunity for those businesses via, via the programme that Phil's outlined. So outside of this meeting, it'd be worth a conversation, I think, with, certainly with Alison and myself.
Definitely.
Well, thank you everybody for attending. I hope you're well and I hope to see you all in person at a Business Peak District event or similar in the near future. Thank you ever so much, Alison. We very much appreciate your time. And we shall put this presentation on, on the Business Peak District website. Thanks, Pete. And from all of us, thank you again to our attendees and we shall see you soon, hopefully. Thank you.
Thanks, Robin. Thanks, Pete. And, and participants, great questions.